Meeting of the Kanioei Neighborhood Board. It is 6:30 PM and this meeting is called to order. The first order of business is to fill some vacancies on the board. We have three. The subdistrict, the Windward Mall area, Subdistrict 2. Puahala, Subdistrict 7. And Subdistrict 9, Kapuna Hala. If there's anyone from those districts that are interested in serving on the board, this is a good time to come forward. Yes, Kim? Tomy, are you raising your hand for this?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. I believe I'm in Subdistrict 9, but I could be incorrect. If I am, I would like to volunteer.
Wonderful. What we'll have to do is adjourn the meeting until the neighborhood assistant, Mr. Johnson, has a chance to verify your address and make sure that you're in that, in that subdistrict.
Got it.
Yes, Kim, if you could send me an image of your license, I can verify your residency that way.
Sure.
Do you have my email?
I probably could look it up, but if you want to give it to me right now.
Sure. It's my name, Spencer.
Spencer.
S-P-E-N-C-E-R dot Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N at Honolulu dot gov.
Is that it? Okay, dot gov. Will do. Oh, you know what?
Very good. I've been, I've been, we're allowed to continue on. And when Spencer gets the email, we can break for when, when that happens. Is that okay, Kim?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to city and state monthly reports. First is the Honolulu Fire Department.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me? So I'm Captain Viera of the Kanioei Fire Station. I'm going to apologize for my voice. These are the statistics for the month of April. For fires, we went to two structured fires. One nuisance fire, two activated alarms, no fire, 149 medicals, eight motor vehicle crash or collisions. Nuisance fires includes rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. The fire safety tip for the month is evacuation planning. Please have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to an emergency. Visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Leave early enough to avoid being caught in fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relatives' house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the Fire Department? I see Mr. Sakamoto. Off you go, sir.
Good, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, for Fire Department. There was an incident where the 911 calls were down for a period of time. How's that impact the services for you folks to get emergencies, fire, and ambulances, et cetera? Was it very impacted that time or not really?
For the 911 system, we do have backup, backup dispatch centers in case, you know, there is a, anything wrong with our radio systems or our electricity. They would have a backup system to notify us. We do have cell phones that have priority during any kind of emergency where they would allow us to still get dispatch information. And outside of that, landlines and other ways that we would still be able to be dispatched. And we have hard copy maps that we would be able to get to our, any area in our district. It's something that every fire station, every fire, firehouse is very prideful of knowing our locations and making sure that we can get to you in an efficient manner.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Fire Department? Spencer, good? Yes? The question is about any tips for allergies during mango season?
Any tips for allergies during mango season? Outside of the, the normal home remedies, antihistamines and, and kind of avoiding, there's nothing.
Asthma attacks waiting in lungs?
I'm sorry.
So I kind of see, I saw it shelter in lungs because I was waiting for my rescue inhaler. It ran out at the wrong time. And so basically I stayed in lungs for about four hours waiting for it because it's outside with poison, especially with the fog. Was there anything to add as far as being in a well-circulated area, but inside of ventilate, like a filtration, right? So like the mall, another one I know. Anything else?
Outside of that, actually, I thought that was a very smart move of you to kind of stay inside of a, something that's filtered, something that has the AC to kind of protect during that, during that time, yeah. There was a number of people that kind of got sick allergies during the, when the south winds came in.
Was any of that like rescue stuff that you guys had to do involving asthma attacks?
Um, there wasn't an abnormal amount or an abnormal increase that we saw. But I know at, at my house, my, my children start to get kind of puffy eyes and watery eyes and stuff like that. But I know there are people with more severe reactions, but we didn't see it on our end where it was starting to turn into some kind of anaphylactic shock or anything like that.
Have you noticed that this season's been a lot drier? Because I kind of went hiking and that's where it started. I was on a hiking trail, kind of picking off some ironwoods that have way too much trash under them and all the ones in Kanioei. Because they used to be used as, I believe, army installations for the pillboxes. But anyway, besides the fire hazard there, what do you guys want to do about it? Like as far as asthma attacks on hiking trails? Because there's a lot of guys doing that, too.
Yeah, for that, I can, I can forward it to see if there's a more formal, permanent solution, but as of now, we respond to anywhere that.
Guys who get like a paper bag and like make it back down the hill, like I should not have done that, but I wasn't expecting to just get hit.
Okay, I think I'm going to stop the conversation right here. That's good. Good questions. And if you can get back to us on some tips for hiking and asthma during mango season, that would be awesome.
Sure, we can do that.
I'm sorry?
I said, sure, we can do that.
What fire, you mean you're talking about the ironwoods? Ironwoods that have fallen on hiking trails? I don't think that's, I'm sorry? On, on hiking trails? Does the Honolulu Fire Department have jurisdiction over hiking trails?
Uh, we do not. That's a DLNR.
Thank you.
In plane.
Uh, any other questions for the Fire Department? Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month. Uh, next up is Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Board. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm Lieutenant Sanford Yu with Night Watch. I'll present the stats for March. Crime was a mixed bag. Motor vehicle thefts were down from seven to five. Burglaries increased from two to six. Theft increased from 16 to 19. Motor vehicle break-ins dropped from four to three. And robberies were unchanged at one. I'm willing to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? I see Mr. Sakamoto. I see Mr. Flaitel. Any others online? Off you go, Mr. Sakamoto. Then Neil.
Thank you for the police report. Just wanted to let you folks know that I had a constituent, a resident concerned about Aloha Street. I think there's someone behind the mall by Plaza residence speeding from Hayea Street, going towards Kauhi Po Street is very dangerous over there. So people trying to come out from the driveways is very dangerous. And then on Kauhi Po Street, same thing, a lot of speeding and cars illegally parked next to the exit of the roadway, especially at driveways like City Mill. Harder for drivers to see the oncoming cars when they're exiting out from that area. So something can be done about that as a safety concern. That's all. Thank you.
Was a time given for the speeding, Mr. Sakamoto?
Uh, I would say for Aloha Street, you know, the one by Plaza, was mostly in the mid-morning, afternoon, the person told me. But she did say she seen some police officers tagging people, so kudos for you for doing that.
Okay.
It's pretty bad.
We'll have that addressed, sir.
That was Alaloa Street. Okay.
Mr. Flaitel. Lieutenant, thanks for your report. I'd ask one question and perhaps you could add this to your statistics for next month, but I would like to know the number of speeding citations that were issued last month. I think there's a general need for people to slow down on the road, so we're trying to do what we can. So could you provide us with any information, statistics in the future?
I will have to check on that. The last time I recall, excuse me, changes to stats, had to go through the Neighborhood Board Commission. I'm not sure if that's still the case. I will check on it and I'll email the Chair.
Thank you. That's okay. Our Neighborhood Commission heard that and has got it for action now.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your report.
Um, Tali, I have some information for you. If you can call me after the meeting.
Okay, you don't want to report it to the public?
I can. So I ran the, the 911 calls for the day of that speeding incident on March 3rd. I could only find three. That doesn't mean there were more, but our officers were only dispatched to three calls during the time of the incident. From my understanding, five officers from Day Watch went to the freeway, specifically the westbound lookout where most of the vehicles were congregated. They chased everybody away. There were some stragglers. I'm not sure if citations were issued because that's not the watch I work on, but there was a report. Hold up one second. By one of our officers. He said that when they went up there, after everybody dispersed, there weren't many other calls throughout the day for those speeding. But again, I only found three dispatch calls. Two hazardous drivers and one at the tunnel.
By dispatch call, do you mean three calls from the public to 911 or you mean from dispatch?
911s for the officers to be sent to a case.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you following up on that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else online? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Yes, sir.
Next is Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Kristy Kalakiva with the Marine Corps Base Hawaii. I have just a short report. I just wanted to share all the activities on base regarding Earth Month. We've had a number of school events where they've been able to go out to Nupia Pond, the students, and involve, get involved with removing of people weed and other activities for Earth Month, as well as our Weed Warrior that occurred on the 13th. And those Weed Warrior events are open to the public. So anybody from the community can come onto the base for those Weed Warrior events. You just call the Environmental Department and they'll make sure that you're able to get on. And the next one is, so sorry about the date, but I will have it for next month. It's not in May. But in May, we are doing the raising of the Hawaiian flag with a ceremony. And our board chairs are invited. And if there's anybody else on the Neighborhood Board who has availability and would like to come, please let me know. Also, we had, I had an email through Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Tsukuda's office from a Kanioei resident that had noticed the bright lights coming from the Marine Corps Base, which appeared to be near the baseball field or the track and field. So I followed up with environmental because I know our environmental department is very strict and works very closely with all aspects of things that go on the base that would have any hindrance or any conflict with any of our, our birds. We have a wonderful bird watching program with Nupia Pond and the watershed over there. And they confirmed with me that for the sheer water, that was the concern that the resident had raised, that the sheer water would be conflicted. But during the month of November and December, there is a higher risk of that where they, the base, even the hangars, lower their lights and close their lights and do everything to minimize any light impact that the sheer water would be directed in. Of course, that's how we have so much fallout. But for the, the summer months, there's not that much effect. But we're following up and environmental has been working with our MCCS Athletic Department to do a little bit more with the lighting. So it is being followed up. Uh, let's see. Landfill question that I would like to answer for Mr. Sakamoto. So the landfill has, they expect another 10 years that it's going to be able to be used. The household rubbish that is from the housing does not get sent to the landfill that's on base. It is picked up by a company that is contracted, and I believe it's West Aragon, I think they said? Yeah. Yes, that one, yeah. Picks, picks up the household. So that landfill on base is only for the larger dumpsters that the base picks up or out, like our working buildings, the marina, areas like that, but not personal. So hope that answers the question. And that's all I have. With the plastic bag, you know what? I didn't. Sorry. I will follow up with that.
And you can just email me and I'll send it to the Board. There's a landfill on base.
There is.
Where is it?
By the range. So if you're going up the range on Port, Port Hasi.
Yeah.
If you point up the range, it's on that left-hand side.
Oh.
You would never know.
Never knew. Well, it's restricted, restricted sign. Any other questions? I see Mr. Sakamoto, Mr. Akamine. You're not putting your hand up, are you? After this, we'll go ahead and take care of that. Go first, please.
Chris, I think that does it. Kanioei Marine Board with Spencer, he would, he would like to talk to Service Man. That assisted our neighborhood with last year. It's clearing out a lot of the junk, a lot of the basic species like African wood, red tree, which I think we all call that, we know, or the itch word, and I'm not going to say it on the mic. Yeah, clearing that stuff out, especially comparing for disaster or fire hazards, what have you. But the other thing that's good about that is it keeps school benefit, age power, that instead of paying them money for when they don't have enough trash, that's pretty funny that we gotta burn all that trash because we're on track. Although we don't make that much trash, here's the good side of renewable energy. We have to pay that. It's a shortfall delivered to their.
So I'm going to redirect. You were saying thank you. What was the project that brought people into your neighborhood to do that?
Project Neighborhood because they needed to fill their service, I believe. There's something involved with, well, when you kind of go for an officer position.
Thanks. Kristy, can you relay that back? That, thank you. Mr. Sakamoto, you already went, didn't you? No.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Good, thank you, Chair. Professional Hawaii Wind Company recently had a agreement with the Department of Defense to build windmills outside of the base over there in the waters. Has Marine Corps Base Hawaii have dialogue with this or is this just with the Department of Defense? And the other question is, I understand that the E, Officers Club is shut down. Can you elaborate on that? And then what's going on with the enlisted, enlisted club? Is it under renovation or is it, is it open?
It's losing. Structurally unsafe. There are plans to, not to renovate, but to build a brand new one. But we know, we're not sure what that timeframe will be. They have to get funding for that. However, I have heard that, that there is funding available. For the windmill, I know that there's ongoing conversations to look for new and different increased energy for the Marine Corps Base as well as the Windward Coast altogether. Whether or not there's conversation with the windmill organization directly, I am not sure of. I can ask our engineer, our Section 4, for some specifics and report back. And then what was the third one?
Uh, enlisted.
Kohunas. I'm not sure I can find out what Kohunas is doing. I have heard that they are restructuring some of the staffing and, and sending them to the E-Club. But I do know that Clipper is doing much more and they're, the Clipper has their little restaurant there as well. And I've eaten there and it's really good. So there is that available still.
They have a wonderful pro shop.
Thank you very much. Another, no. What is it? It's got to be quick and it's got to be a question. Exactly. So we had a brief, maybe it was a year and a half ago, that the folks that were considering doing this, and they, they got that exact question plus a bunch of other questions related to windmills. They, right now, it's not happening right now. What makes you say that? No, that's not true. Maybe at the gun range, but I know the Clipper, that's not the case. I worked there. I've been there since 2004, so that's 20 years I've been down there. Okay, that's some pretty impressive canoneering. You can make a note of that as well. Okay, moving on to bringing a new, Kim, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
She within the district? Do you want to do it and tell us why?
Yes, I do want to do it. I just want to be more involved in the community and be a part of, I just want to be a part of the Board and, and contribute.
Are there any superpowers that you might have that can contribute to the Board?
And I'm a very good writer, so I could help with drafting.
Ready to take a vote? Anybody on the Board want to ask any questions?
This is Sakamoto. Kim, can you tell us more about, about yourself? You know, what's your history?
Sure, absolutely, sure. I grew up in Hawaii. I was born at Tripler Army Hospital. My dad was in the Navy. Grew up out on Hawaii Kai, at Port Luck Road before there was a Hawaii Kai. Moved to the mainland for college, came back, got married, had a child, remarried. My second husband left for Arizona for a job and I went with him. And then when, when that marriage didn't work out, I came home. So I went back to law, to school, got my law degree.
Great place to start. Lawyer and a writer. Are you satisfied, Mr. Sakamoto? Kim, we have one more question.
Sure.
Just wanted to ask, how long you been a resident of that, that district or in that, at that location?
I moved here in July of 2021. So it's been almost three years. And I love this neighborhood. It is, of all the places I've lived on Oahu, and there's been a lot. Kahala to Manoa to Nuanu. Windward Side is heaven and this particular part of Kanioei is the best. Hands down.
At this time, we'll take a vote. All in favor of bringing Kim Tomy onto the Board? So what were you going to say, Spencer? I don't have to do this? Oh, okay, I'm getting counseled.
Would one of the Board members like to nominate Kim?
Uh, I would, Sakamoto would like to nominate Kim Tomy.
Awesome, thank you. This is Subdistrict 9 vacancy. And I will go ahead, we'll do a roll call. The rules for filling in vacancies, you have to say the name of the person you wish to vote for. So Kim Tomy? I'm sorry, is it Tomy or Tom?
Tomy, like homie but with a T.
Okay, Tom. Brian Beverley. Mark Brandl. Elena Bryant.
We supposed to do something?
Uh, yeah, you're supposed to respond when we say your name, yeah. Well, you don't have to vote, too, so, yeah, I don't have to do anything. Would you like to vote? Okay. Who would you like to vote for? Okay, Kim, okay. Elena Bryant, she's online.
I vote in favor of Kim.
Laura Burbage. Dale Carsonson.
Yes, for Kim Tomy.
Cecil Downing. Neil Flaitel. Adria Lamb. Here, Greg Davis. Moradke. Donald Sakamoto.
Yes, for Kim Tomy.
Ali Sevier.
Well, Kim Tomy.
David Shizuma.
Sheriff for Kim Tomy.
Daddy Yamashiro. Congratulations, Kim Tomy.
Thank you.
And I can do a brief swearing in. That's okay?
Off you go, sir.
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws of the city and county Honolulu.
Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan.
And the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan.
And will conscientiously and impartially.
And will conscientiously and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the Kanioei Neighborhood Board.
As a member of the Kanioei Neighborhood Board. I lost the seven points.
That's, that's it? I'm glad I didn't have to do that. Thank you for doing that. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
Uh, so you know, we meet at Ben Parker Elementary School. That's where we are. So looking forward to seeing you here.
Okay, next month.
Or there, or there. You have the options to do both. Thank you so much. Moving on to Board Briefs. First is the Windward Emergency Preparedness Committee. I believe you have some information to talk about.
Yes, we do, Chair. Chair, to the Board and to the community, thank you very much for this opportunity to share with you some of the information that we've been able to come up with today. We were all shocked by the West Maui fire disaster last August. As the shock and sadness and the reality set in, it caused many of us to stop and think about our safety here in Kanioei. As a consequence of this heightened sense of fragility, the Kanioei Neighborhood Board Emergency Preparedness Committee sought to understand just where we stood. We began by seeking out the organizations responsible for our safety in an emergency. Who would be responsible for a response to a major disaster should one occur? Not should it occur, it's a question of when it will occur. Over the past six months, what we've learned, and this is not conclusive and is ongoing, resources for the Windward Side are limited compared to Honolulu and West Maui. Department of Emergency Management states that it is possible that no help will become available for up to 21 days during an emergency. There are no evacuation locations predetermined here in the greater Kanioei area. There are no pre-stage resources for the Windward Side as we are made aware of to date. Current emergency plans say to refer to the internet for details. However, in an emergency, there may be no power, no internet, no phone service. What did we do then? There is no overarching coherent emergency communication strategy either that we can find. And this is key from the state down to us here in the local community. CERT, or the Community Emergency Response Team, is an underutilized resource that needs to be reinvented for Kanioei and possibly beyond. Most of the community is unaware of all of these issues, and this may not be all of them for sure. What I'd like to do is to call on Neil to give you a further update on some of the other findings that we have, and also Mark. Thank you, Neil.
Thanks, Dale. If I told you that there, that the county, City and County of Honolulu actually had no proactive emergency plan, probably not believe me, but I am going to tell you that the reality is there is no proactive emergency plan for the community on, in Kanioei and on the greater Windward Side. There is a mitigation plan that is completely different. So do not think that because there is a mitigation plan, there is an emergency plan. So that is the biggest, the biggest problem that we confront right now. Does anybody know what they're supposed to do? Not done. I'm not done. Please, let me finish. Does anybody know what to do? Does anybody know where to go? So that's the biggest thing. The, the D E M actually states that they're going to do, take three days to decide what it is that they think we ought to do after an emergency starts. And with all due respect to the captain from the Fire Department, he said there's backups and there's backups and there's backups for communication systems. Once the cell towers go down, there is no backup. As a matter of fact, the Attorney General's report, which was published just yesterday, states that there was a complete communications breakdown for, on West Maui. And so I, I submit that there is no actual communications plan, certainly not a backup plan that's going to work in an emergency. So no plan, lack of communication strategy. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mark because our time is very limited to talk a little bit about CERT.
Thank you, Neil. I've been a member of CERT since about 2019, became an instructor very quickly. And from the get-go, I was told that CERT units on the island of Oahu are self-mobilized. In other words, leaders of the CERT groups, which I am the Chair and the IC for the Kanioei Kahalu Cert Group, I will not get a phone call from anybody at the D E M or at the state that says we are in an active emergency situation. The individual CERT group has to mobilize on its own. Normally, on the mainland, the CERT groups are organized with the Fire Department, trained and aligned with the Fire Department, local government agencies. However, here on Oahu, they lack that support. In fact, I have been told by various individuals that the reason that the Fire Department is not involved with the local community CERT is a union issue. CERT communications, ham radio networks exist. However, if we don't have a way to intercommunicate with the Fire Department, the Police Department, the D E M, Haema, how are we going to respond? How are we going to coordinate those efforts when the emergency hits? Neil has stated that the D E M has stated the first three days of an emergency, they're going to be planning their response. And then we can be sitting around for another 14 to 21 days before we actually see anything come from the D E M. CERT needs to have resources pre-staged in order to operate effectively and efficiently. We, we. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this. Because we are effectively not even connected with the D E M, we've been told that we have to self-mobilize, we have to self-sustain, we have to do our things on our own. How do we coordinate? And, and the majority of the people on the Windward Side, on the whole island of Oahu, do not know that these circumstances exist. Pass it back to Neil.
Okay, thanks, Mark. I just want to point out that right here on page 24 of the Fire Department's report for the West Maui fire disaster, the second half of the page is dedicated to, oh, CERT, underutilized and why? So that is part of the report that just came out as well. We have, the whole thing is, is a huge debacle. But I'm, and we are just here to present the issues. Next week, we're, the next month, we're going to present the basis of a plan and where we think, things we ought to try and things we, where we need to go. But none of it's going to happen without the support of the community. We are the community. We are the Windward Side. Okay, we are Kanioei. We need the support. We need the support of the community. Now, it may be partly D E M's fault for not doing any community outreach and not trying to do anything with CERT. That is true. But left to our own devices, which is plain and simple truth, we need the entire community to act. We need to organize. Need to organize. We need to reach out to all our churches, all of our service organizations of which we might be members. And we need to get everybody educated. Get people to act. Part of that is please, okay? Take CERT training.
So Neil, Neil.
Yes.
You've expressed the, the concern with where we're standing and what the need. You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to wait, please. Jeff? You're gonna have to wait. I have the microphone, I'm the chair, so you have to wait for me and you have to address your, your comments to me. I'm not going to have public comments on this because you've presented a report where you.
Like to ask if he knows where our water comes from and it's if he, either Neil or Mark, has been here during 1992 when we were hit by Iniki. And if the emergency plan wasn't clear enough during Iniki, it's to shelter in place. Because our water is gravity fed, not electrically pumped.
Well, thank you for the statement. My, my comment, Neil, is what do you want from the community? You say you need the community to be involved. What do you want from the community?
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, appreciate that. I, we are, we are prepared to next month present what we think we want everyone to do, including the community. But right now, we're trying to raise awareness.
I, I think you've done that quite well with this report.
And so we, we look forward to presenting our action report next month.
If you're asking the community to be involved and I'm, you're telling me that there's going to be an action report, between now and then, what can the community do to be involved with this CERT group in order to help you come up with the action plan?
Reach out to me or Mark. It's the first thing. Reach out to me or Mark. And we'll discuss what actions we can take, including some CERT training. But there are other things to do also. If you're a member of a church or a community organization, reach out in that direction. And if, if I need to come and speak to someone at your church or community organization, contact me and I'll be glad to go.
So if you two wouldn't mind giving your contact information to Spencer so he can put it into the chat? And anybody who wants to connect between now and the action plan, this, that would be a good thing to do, I think.
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Jeff, same thing. I think the same thing. Instead of blurting stuff out, if you want to be involved with the solution, same thing. They're gonna put to get. I'm sorry? Well, he, none of these guys work for the state. They are in a community, all volunteer type of situation. So if you have some information relating to electricity, because I know that's your background, I, I think it would be valuable if you were involved in this process too.
Chair, if I may just add, on May 11th at Windward Mall, there is an Emergency Management Awareness Day. So we invite the community out for that. And again, it's just to get the community involved and first and foremost, to understand what we are and what our risks are. And that's what's most important. So again, thank you for this opportunity. We will share additional information both to the board and to the community as it becomes aware.
Thank you.
I would like, I would like to just give a shout out to Esther Kiana, our Council Representative, for being engaged and working with us to try to bring also the entire Windward Side. I met last night with the North Shore Emergency Preparedness Committee and we're trying to bring together Waimea and Kaedah so that we have a Windward Coalition to do this. So thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Nice job, board, committee. Uh, next is Oahu Pentathlon Brief. Are you on TV? All right, moving on to Hawaii Legacy Senior Care LLC.
Hello, Kako. Chair, board members, thank you for having me at this meeting. I am here to announce that I will be putting in a new application for a conditional use permit major for a 24-unit adult residential care home type two. It will be specializing in memory care, similar to Halekuiki. And this is not the first time that I've brought this project forward to the board. Initially in 2022, when I brought it to you, it was a lot closer to COVID, so we weren't able to meet in person. But I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we could do it in person today. So the initial, conditional use permit that I spoke of was approved and I took every measure that was laid out by the city and county to get that permit approved. So we are currently holding the approval, but going through an appeal process with a group of neighbors that do not want the project. The, there is a wide variety of complaints, okay? And it's open to the public. Everything that I could do that was viable, I did to bring it within standards. I am not the city and county. I do not lay out the rules. But I am playing by them. And I am here in person so you guys can see that I'm, I am Kanaka.
What's your name?
I'm born and raised in Kanioei, right up there valley. I came home to give back to my community. I was an EMT. I drove these streets, I helped these people. Okay, I know these, I know this problem intimately. Every complaint that I can do something about, I will. This new drawing that I submitted as a modification is because I am being appealed and something that I could do to mitigate their concerns, okay? It is larger than the, than the original drawing. Sorry, there's a fight outside. No, no problem, no problem. He's another member of our community. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But I think it's absolutely. No, 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 absolutely. Every complaint is public knowledge.
Two-minute recess, thank you. Was the, is the briefing? Uh, continuing on with the brief. Sorry, I had to step out.
I'll continue where I was at. So I put in a minor modification on the approved conditional use permit, which is a new drawing. It is larger. I got a much more experienced architect to get involved so that I could bring a better product to my community. It is within the setbacks. Everything is above board. I did not ask for more rooms. My original plan was more rooms than what I have now. I am at the, the approved amount. It's 24 units, private baths. These will be single occupant units, okay? I am now putting in the new application because that minor modification process doesn't require any public hearings or anything to be announced. So none of you would know if I made that change. So I am going to reapply. I am not taking my foot off of the approved permit because that would be very irresponsible of me to leave it up to the wind if, if this new one gets approved because of the opposition that I am facing with the approved permit. I am, I am going through this permit process and that is why I'm here to announce that I will put in, put in a new application that will be very similar to the modif, the, the minor modification that I had, I had just submitted and I'm waiting for feedback from the director. With that said, there will be a public hearing where I make more, or, or I give more information, more specifics on the land use ordinances and everything else, the drawings, everything that I am doing, it will be at that public hearing and I, there will be another chance to speak with me if you want to, to be there. And I will be there in person giving that speech. I will not have an attorney do my, do my job because this is my community, okay? And thank you for your time. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here.
Two questions real quickly. What is your job?
I'm a loan officer.
A loan officer?
I'm a loan officer now, but I was an EMT prior, yes.
And, and is this, is this your business that you're wanting to, wanting to open?
Yes.
Got it. And you said opposition that you're facing. Can you describe a little bit what that opposition might be? In, in detail, what the, what the opposing views are from your standpoint?
They want traffic studies done. They want, you know, water mitigation hydrology studies. They want sewage studies. They want light, light damages, birds in the area being during construction, mud in the, mud in the bay. I mean, you, you think of it and it's, it's been brought forth, so yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, are there any other questions from the board and the community? I'm gonna, I'm gonna gatekeep with the board first because I see some community members here as well. You may, your questions may be asked and answered by the board if they are. You know, you can come. You know, you can come up and still say, I had that same question, and it was answered, or I had that same question, and it wasn't answered. But I don't want to spend a lot of time going over the same questions again and again. So, so hands up over here. Holly, Vika. Go ahead, Holly.
I'm looking at your property. It's a corner lot in a residential neighborhood. 24 patients. How many staff is that, please?
It will be six to one, so there'll be four at a time watching the residents.
And are you planning to turn the green space into parking lot to accommodate those staff?
The green space?
Just looking at the plot, it's a residential lot with a house on it, some green space on the corner. Where is the parking gonna be?
Well, it's all in the front, but the drawings are with the DPP now.
Okay.
And, yeah, everything is definitely public information, and I would be happy to email it to you if you want to see it when it's...
Thank you.
Yes.
Actually, I don't know how to ask this question very well, but I'm gonna try anyway. I'm curious to know, and I don't know if it's too early in your planning to kind of eyeball it, but the cost for these residents or, you know, patients or whatnot. Do you... Is it like right in the like a middle or average or, you know, is it a little bit more of a high-end location, high-end facility?
It will, it'll be a high-end facility. Yeah, and that's due to the neighborhood. You know, the placement is is high-end, like this is along the waterline. And I want to be straightforward, right, that you don't get to do affordable housing until you have big portfolio. Because that's a gift, right, to give. And I am trying to do that at some point in my life, and this is my first project. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
When you submit the application to the DDC, did you have to include financials in your in your plan or any business plan? No?
No, that's not a part of the application.
That's proprietary to your business. Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? Dale?
Thank you, Chair. Interesting project. I think my concern, knowing that the busy traffic area that there is there on Koneohe Bay Drive, and from my recollection, there truly is no improved sidewalk area. Do you have any way of addressing that in front of this? I mean, you're right in a churn.
No, but I hope to be an advocate with the city to, you know, vote for that, right? Like, there's nothing on public land I can't do anything, right? I mean, I can barely do anything on my own property. Like, so to think that I could... I see those concerns, speed bump sidewalks. Yeah, like, I would love to do that at some point, but, I mean, that's not my... I wish it was, but I would vote for yes. Like, let's put sidewalks.
Are there any questions from the community? Kim online, thank you.
Yes, sorry. Could the speaker just repeat his name, please?
Jacob Chan.
Thank you.
Questions from the community? I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring this microphone over to you so you don't have to stand on top of each other.
I don't want to go into any area that is not appropriate. And I had just, it was a collective effort in the neighborhood to just have three points that sort of spoke to the process and status. Should I not do that? Yes. Okay. Right. Oh, sorry. We have written testimony. My notes, yep. I was, I'll do it fast. Okay, well, so first, I want to thank the neighborhood board for allowing us to be here. Some of the neighbors are here, and some neighbors are on Zoom. I just happen to be the one that got voted to do this. But basically, as Jacob said, he has put in a minor modification application that increases the size of the facility from 12,645 feet, square feet, square feet to almost 20,000 square feet. So, you know, we do think that even if the minor modification application is approved, it will not resolve all of the issues on appeal to the zoning board of appeals. And all the items in our appeal, besides the things addressed by the modification application, have not been resolved, mitigated, or discussed in detail by near proximity neighbors and Mr. Chan. Submitting the modification application is a step in the right direction, but it will not be enough to resolve all of the issues on appeal to the city and county zoning board of appeals. You know, we feel that safety should be paramount in the community, and it's interesting that emergency awareness was brought up. That is, those are some of the things that we address in the appeal. And in addition to the safety of the current, the existing neighbors, we wonder how a two-story, 24-unit complex with elderly the tonight said, "memory care," so you'll have an element of dementia and requiring assistance with activities of daily living with one elevator to service the entire facility, the entire second floor. How do you keep those individuals safe in the event of an extreme tsunami, for example, which the site is in an extreme tsunami zone? And how do you factor in the existing neighbors, some of whom are quite elderly? And so we're three small cul-de-sacs in a neighborhood of Koneohe Bay. How are we all going to maneuver this small area? That is a concern, and we're also concerned about the health of Koneohe Bay because site is at the terminus of a water channel that leads directly to Koneohe Bay. So, you know, we feel that the safety issue and the health of the ecosystem are definitely things that the director of DPP should have considered and done a complete review of prior to greenlighting a facility of this scope, size, and intensity in a residential neighborhood that has no other commercial development. This will be, Mr. Chan's first project will be a commercial facility of first impression in the neighborhood. So I will just skip everything I was gonna say and get right to this point here, that we recently engaged Mr. Chan. We had not heard from him after the last Koneohe Neighborhood Board meeting where that resulted in Chair Bradkey submitting written testimony to basically say there was opposition and that to the project, which shouldn't move forward without discussion, mitigation, and resolution of community issues with the near proximity neighbors. So after participating in the permitting process, that did not happen. In the intervening year after filing the appeals, we heard through the coconut wireless that there might be a presentation tonight, so we reached out to Mr. Chan, met with him over Zoom on April 16. Tonight, he confirmed that a new application will be substantially the same as the original application. So that being the case, the community respectfully respectfully asks that the board consider inquiring of Mr. Chan as to why he did not notify the neighbors of his plan to present to the neighborhood board this evening. And we hope that his discussion with the board will help all of us involved to gain a better understanding of what Mr. Chan's thinking is concerning the community issues. Thank you.
Thank you. So you wanted to take that last question? Will you keep me track of all of the questions that were being asked? Just answer the last one, which was, why wasn't the community notified about this meeting?
Okay, so I want to address just a couple. So, again, I'm not the city and county. I'm not the legislature. I do not write the laws for this type of development. But it is there. This conditional use permit is there. It's written for because this is a protected class that is very hard to serve. This is a difficult project to do. So they need to write the conditional use permit, lay it out so that if by chance somebody figures out how to do it, they can, because the need is so great. The neighborhood board meeting that was scheduled tonight, I did not reach out to the neighbors because we have been, and I haven't spoken to them since the original neighborhood board meeting because things got legal and my hands were tied. I did not make them so. I want, I wanted to be very clear that I need, I need to protect myself from any type of slander because anything that I did say to them originally, when I invited them to speak with me, got turned around and blasted on the news. Every news channel went with this thing, newspapers, the direct news. And so that is, I have no, I have no communication with them since then. Because of that, they reached out, and I applied to meet in person or on Zoom. And that was the first time that they reached out. My number is everywhere. My name is all over this thing. I'm not hiding behind LLC. I am not, I am the one. I am the applicant. So I am available. Thank you.
I wasn't, I was, it was, I was a community member who wanted to ask a question, but I was just saying, hold off and let you finish what you were, what you were saying.
Yeah, I'm done. And thank you, guys, if you guys have any more questions.
Okay, do you have a question that's related to this project? Make it short, please.
Have you ever cared for someone with dementia or Alzheimer's?
I am not a nurse. I was an EMT. Yes, I have contact with patients with dementia.
And you describe their condition when they are experiencing, say, panic and an extreme emergency?
In need of professional help, which I am not licensed currently to give.
Would you say their demeanor is calm when they lose track of who they are, where they are, and what time of day it is?
No, I would not characterize it that way.
During a storm event that is very...
Last question. Last question. It's, I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have a back and forth like this. And we've got a whole community behind you, Jeff, that are asking already what they've asked. So you've kind of thrown four questions in there.
If, if there were to be an emergency?
Did you want to deliver this to me?
Elevator, and if you're trying to cram them all into it, or if there are staircases, and if they are able to walk and are assisted by nurses, do you feel that...
Okay, that's, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stop this conversation right here. Thank you very much. Scott Steiner? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why...
Correct it to me, please.
I was just wondering why Mr. Chan had a problem with the various type of surveys and reports that the community asked for, why that's a bad thing, if you really care.
I think he, I think he said that. He said that there was a lot of backlash the last time he offered that.
No, no, I'm asking why doing the surveys and such things that the community has concern with, why is that a bad thing if he cares about the community?
I didn't, I didn't hear him say that it was a bad thing.
Well, he said that he was required to do all these sewer things. It didn't sound like, I mean, as a...
Do you know what he's talking about? Okay, answer it to me, please. Because you can make me understand, because I don't understand the question.
Sure. So he's asking if an environmental study could be conducted on my end or a traffic study be done, right? So is that, is that clear, Scott?
Yeah, correct. Thanks, Jacob.
Yeah, so those studies are very expensive, like professionals. Like, it's, it is extensive, extensive work. It is not required by the city and county for this type of development. I am not the one that decides if it's, if it is and if it isn't. But I have expenses to place where needed. And fire, fire suppression, everything that I can do, I will do. Drainage, all of that stuff that is in my purview. When the architect and the engineers ask me, should I go cheap or should I go to the one that's gonna do good? I'm gonna go to my best ability. I'm going to give my community my best shot. That's what it is, okay? I'm not going cheap. I'm not going single wall. I'm not doing any of that stuff. I am going to make this thing as beautiful as possible and function for decades. This, this facility will serve my community for decades. Families in need, not, not, not guys that can be here tonight that know that this thing is going on. In need, they are dealing with this stuff.
Okay, you're very passionate about that, Jacob. Very passionate about that. There are some concerns.
A traffic study is something that a developer should do and understanding. It sounds like your finances are really tight, and possibly you aren't gonna be able to finish this or run into a situation if you can't afford a traffic study. I mean, it's just, it's mind-blowing that you hope to get through without jumping through all these hoops and...
Okay, well, you're, Scott, you're, Scott, you're supposing that, so I'm not gonna let that conversation go any further. You can't, you don't know his financial situation, and I think it's unfair for you to bring that up here. But there are some concerns from the community that whether there is a traffic study that's required, you have to recognize that there are concerns. And whatever you can do to mitigate some of those concerns, I think that would be a good idea rather than stiff-arming the community, because that's what it feels like to me. No, that's, I don't, I don't need a big explanation. I know, I know how a cup works, and I know how that everybody in the community is gonna have an opportunity, again, in front of the board to actually make their comments known again. Just if my advice to you, and if I could give advice, is that they have issues, and if you can address those specific issues when you do it, it might solve the problems. Okay, I'm, I'm, right now, now it's difficult for you, and it's difficult for them because we're creating a block between you and the community. Because you're, you're calling it a NIMBY thing. I know it's a business thing, but you need to stay, stay calm and a little less passionate about, about what the situation is and maybe listen to... And I hear what you're saying. If you try and fix one thing, there'll be five others. So from the board, and I'm speaking for me right now, and I'll ask the board separately. At this point, because we've heard from this before, we had concerns with the board, and then we're hearing it again tonight, we still have the same concerns because those things aren't addressed. And I think the board position is going to be, address those things, and we would be, you know, amiable to this. No, we're in a meeting right now. I'm just telling, I'm telling you what I feel. I, this, this is from me. I have to get the board's permission to write another letter to decide what the board position is. So I can't do that on my own. That's gonna be a board decision. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a vote at the board about what we're gonna do about what we just heard tonight. But it's not gonna happen until our next meeting. I don't think it was, it was, it was, we were for it if you could fix the issues that the community had. And I think the community is for it if you can fish, fix the issues that they have. Not all of them. I mean, because it's not all, you can't have everything you want, and you know that, but you can't have nothing. And you can't have everything you want, you need to meet the needs of some of the community, and that's just the way a negotiation works. Nobody's going to win everything. Nobody's going to come away completely pleased. Somebody's going to be a little bit bugged, but you're going to get something. And I think that's fair for both sides. I'm, no, I'm, we're done with this. Thank you. Board, I'll be coming back to you. We'll discuss this at our, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting, because I can't do anything between then and now, now and then. Wonderful discussion. Thanks, Jacob. Okay, where are we at? Shuffling along, thank you. Uh, resident community concerns. Are there any resident community concerns? Thank you. Oh, and I also want to state for the record, I want to state for the record that I did get some, uh, I did get some testimony that needs to be added into the, to the minutes of the meeting. Oh, he has it already. Very good. Off you go.
I'm here representing the Kani'oe Kahalu Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT group that you heard about tonight, and we are sponsoring the Windward Emergency Preparedness Fair coming up on May 11th, that Dale mentioned. Thank you. And I'm here specifically to thank this board, and particularly Neil, I think, was pushed, Dale pushed, Mark pushed to get the Kani'oe board back into this. You were our first sponsor of emergency preparedness fair for Pōlau Pōkou. And you've been absent for a while, so this is mahalo for coming back into it. And I hope that the community will come and join. There are two dozen private and public organizations, agencies, that have plenty of stuff for you, plenty of stuff, for you, giveaways and information that hopefully will enhance our preparedness, because everything you heard is right. We are on our own, folks, for quite a while if there is a disaster. So as prepared as you can get, do it. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Time is between 10:00 and 2:00 on May 11th, Saturday afternoon. Do your Mother's Day shopping.
It's at Windward Mall, and if anybody got a copy of this month's agenda, you'll see that it was Sunday, May 11th. It should be Saturday, May 11th.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other community concerns? Go for it. Uh, yeah, let's, let's go with the young lady first, and then you can go.
Scott, all from Wood Neighborhoods to Core Neighbors Meet. And just wanted to let everyone know that we have a Core Neighbors meeting at Ho'omalu Hia Park next week, Saturday, April 27th, 10 a.m. So this meeting is open to everyone. Also, on that same day, on April 27th, is the National Take Back Initiative. This wire, and so burn in your unused or expired medication for safe and anonymous portable disposal. And on, uh, so it's from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And District 4, it'll be at the Honolulu Fire Department, at the Kailua Fire Station 18, the parking lots, and at Key Project Multipurpose Center on Waikiki Road. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have this card, which has the helpful website of Honolulu PD dot org. There's a lot of information on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, I'm Sean O'Connor. And Esther, we just wanted to ask, I saw some pouring samples being taken on Iwau today, and I know you probably can't answer to them specifically, but why they were out there, and they did multiple pouring samples all the way across that street? And they couldn't, the, the guys were brave. They were really nice guys, very courteous, but they, they, they were pouring into the stream in multiple places, and they, they said it was the city, but they couldn't tell us what was pouring. I love, but if you could let us know, that would be great. They're just, we just wanted to know that it seemed like a strange activity. And we know there's been some water main breaks there, and, but anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other community concerns? Uh, there was one, there's one listed here, errant balls from Bayview Golf Course into homes adjacent to the range. Uh, I spoke, is there anybody to speak to that? I spoke to the resident. I spoke to the resident, and I spoke to the driving range. The resident described golf balls coming in at indiscriminate times when I talked to the golf course. There are sometimes people that will, who can really whack a golf ball and hit it over the fence. As soon as that does happen, and the, and the, the top golf or the, the machine that they have there, the launch monitor detects a ball that flies that distance, the people in the office get an immediate notification, and they come right outside to the exact stall where it came from, and they either have to make them stop doing that, or they have to ask them to leave. Uh, we've talked about a couple of other enhancements that they have or could have. Uh, one of those is limited flight golf balls, and that's one of the other things that they're considering to prevent those golf balls from going into the, into the housing. No, there's, no, this, this is a community comment that I brought up from the community, and I, I already gave both sides of the story.
There's driving range at Poli. Just don't hit it out of the bushes and hit Am Highway.
Thank you. All right, moving on to elected, are there any other community concerns? Moving on to elected officials. Anyone from Representative Jill Takuta's office? Governor Green was representative.
I'm going to read, I'm not going to do it. Member Vice Chair, Yaina, has the opportunity to make her comments.
Aloha, and good evening, everyone. I know many residents continue to be concerned about the condition of Kamehameha Highway through Kani'oe Town, and I just wanted to give you an update on both short-term and long-term efforts. I actually raised the issue at a recent budget hearing, particularly the Kamehameha Highway and Lili'oponopono Road intersection. So the city's Department of Facilities Maintenance will be conducting spot repairs to specific problem areas, including the intersection I just cited. And, uh, the status was that they needed a traffic plan to be approved prior to making repairs, because it is a high-traffic-volume area. And they, uh, the plan has been submitted, and the approval is pending, and they expect to start those repairs in mid-May. With regard to the long-term road resurfacing, as I have stated previously, uh, on Kamehameha Highway from Peku Road to Likeleike Highway, it will be repaved by the Department of Design and Construction. And according to their report, their quarterly report, it's expected to begin at the end of 2024 and be completed by 2025. With regard to the city's budget, the projects that probably would be of most interest to residents would be continuing funding for the Kailua wastewater treatment plan. Forty-five, forty-six point five million is in the budget. Kailua-Kani'oe Area Sewer Reconstruction Rehabilitation at one million. Kani'oe-Kailua Sewer Tunnel Decommission, uh, two hundred thousand. And all of this is in addition, of course, to the eleven million in last year's budget to implement a UV disinfection system, which is to address the bacteria exceedance levels that we continue to experience in the bay, and that would be completed by the ending of 2025. I wanted to thank O'Neill and Dale for meeting with me with regard to the emergency preparedness. I, um, I completely agree with them about the concern about the disconnect between the community emergency response teams and the various branches of the city, and including the state. Uh, with regard to what I'm doing that I feel that I could do at least immediately, I chair a committee that oversees all of the development and sustainability plans. We just got submitted the Primary Urban Foredevelopment Plan, and I looked at their emergency response section, and I thought it was wanting, and I will be sharing it with the team, and maybe they can share it with CERTS from Kahala to Pearl City. That's five council members for their Manao. I stated this at the Pu Council meeting when it was submitted on Wednesday, and I am in receipt of the language from the recent report in Maui, and that's the kind of language that I need, and it should be in all future sustainability plans. So, uh, but apart from CERT, I believe that if you have Manao, you guys should, maybe this could be the template, because I was upset when I got briefed, and all of these other sections had long sections in their summary, and when it came to emergency preparedness, it was with, on one page with four other issues. It was like an afterthought, and I, I made it clear to the Department of permitting and planning. Um, I would say that the grants and aid program, both at the city and the state, are probable sources of funding for all of the CERTS on Oahu. And I have to say that I think the likelihood of getting funded is good, and the reason being, uh, the way the rules operate, a lot of the big institutions, Boys and Girls Club just contacted me, uh, and, and even Red Frost, sometimes they don't get funded. And because the way it's, uh, the system is set up is when a organization specifically services a district, it counts. And so they don't just go on a scorecard and say all of these other big institutions are the ones going to get funding. So I, I'm just thinking, I really think that you guys figure out, but I think that's one way, but I've already, uh, we're going to be talking with Marine Corps Base to at least see, uh, Pōkoua, and maybe what we could do is, as I talked about, starting an informal meeting. And also, Adrian Lamb, been working with him and the Kani'oe Business Group to get the mayor's Office of Economic Revitalization to get a little more involved with Kani'oe businesses, and we are hoping to meet with them at, I believe that their July function, and when that happens, the location, we will, I asked for Pōkoua to get the word out. And I am going to do everything possible. I have a zoning hearing that morning, but I am going to leave that hearing about 11 o'clock to be down here for that function. And that's my report. Chair?
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions for the council member? I'm sorry? Yeah, I'll read it in just a second. No, I know, I've already asked for questions, so, and she's standing right there. So Holly first, and then Mr. Sakamoto.
Um, thank you, council member. I hear you talking about clear plans, and I love clear plans. Um, can we see some clear plans for the removal of the stairway, please? I noted you had a press conference this month to announce the start of removal, even though you don't have the permits yet.
Thank you for that question.
That wasn't my question. My question was, what are the plans? And can we see them? Especially plans for helicoptering near the school and freeway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And this actually answers not just that, but your question several months ago with regard to the impact of charter school, which is in the vicinity. So, uh, this evening at 5:30, there was a briefing by Napa Company to the parents who were concerned. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to try to secure that PowerPoint. That was the first time I saw the light pen, but I understand that the FAA has approved their permits. They are not allowed to go over the H3 or any populated area. So I guess I want to tell you, in an ideal world, when I was driving here, I was still listening to it. I don't know how we could do it, but I could ask them to come here to brief you, because they're likely to start in the beginning of May. When is the next Kani'oe Board meeting?
Third weekend in May.
Third weekend in May. Uh, can I ask the board right now, would you want a special, a meeting specifically for that? And I can ask them. Okay, but, okay, thank you, but I guess I'm putting this out here because, is there anyone interested in a briefing on the plan? Or would you like me to simply get the PowerPoint and I send it to the chair? Uh, would you like your own audience with Napa Company? I, I can't answer your question.
At the press conference, it was announced as a collaborative process, so we, as the board, would love a meeting with the company that's going to remove it. But you said you're going to start the removal before you've even met with us, so I'm confused about where the collaboration in this project is.
Thank you. Any, anything else?
So-
I don't have any further direction.
So the, what we'd like to have is, we'd like to have a brief, and we'd like to have a, a brief on what the plan is to remove the stairs.
Got it. So it would be a special meeting for the board, or would you like me to have a community meeting?
I think, let's start by sending the plans that they have, maybe of the PowerPoint that they would have presented, so we could see what it is, and then let, let's see what, let's see what simmers from there, and that gives us time for, for May. You making? Sure. Is it to me?
I'm just confused. Originally, the plans were eighteen months. Now the plans are six months and involve three-time longer flight path. I'd really like to see the plans before the work starts, because this is like a $2.6 million deal right now. Flying three times as long in, in a third of the time. Doesn't make sense to me. I'd like to see the plans. Thank you.
Just because you're unhappy, it doesn't mean it's not moving forward.
Mr. Sakamoto?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Esther, thank you for your report. A couple bills that I kind of missed here, City Council, Bill 19 is one of them, Bill 5758, the gambling bill, and Resolution 92 and 103. Uh, I have, would like an update, and then, as a blind individual, I still have issues with, and my other color parts are blind, with electric scooters, segways, electric bikes, regular bikes, you can't hear them. And these people are, they don't care about people at the speed like myself. And then the noise level from motor vehicles is very strong, very, very damaging to my ears and whatnot.
That's a good question. So first of all, Jaren of my staff is online. You, you rattled off a lot of bills. Uh, Bill 19 was the ban on commercial activity, correct?
Uh, with the housing. The housing was being built by the city, you know, you can get, make sure that the people that live there get priority.
Oh, got it. Okay. And then 5758?
The gambling enforcement.
Follow up with you directly. Let me comment about the electric vehicles. Uh, a big concern, especially on the beaches, both unauthorized motor vehicles as, as well as electric bikes. I was told that, uh, because- I was told that um, the, uh, because uh, bikes are not banned in beaches, uh, they never clarify about electric bikes. So there is grave concern that uh, parks and restaurants clarify that. Uh, but I myself am worried about it in general. Um, even going to, it's picked up in just the last six months. Walking to Honolulu holiday is a pathway. And we have electric vehicles speeding by while we walk. And that's on the street, for example. Um, and a young man uh, was just hit uh, recently, the young boy. So uh, I actually, I haven't read it yet, but I uh, just uh, contacted the Office of Council Services to find out all of the legal authorities for uh, electric bikes. And I'm gonna follow up with uh, with uh, as a part uh, about the vehicles. So I will give a report to you in. Got it?
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. Any other questions? One question? Okay, let's hear it.
Anyone in the room been hit by a car? One. Well, I have.
And?
Skateboarding.
And what?
Sucks. We're told that we can no longer skate in our town on the sidewalk. So we have to skateboard on the road. That was our transportation. So before these new fanglit devices, that, that, you just kind of push yourself. Be, or just walk. Cause that was sick. But if you're bombing a hill at fifty miles an hour on skateboard and get hit by a car, oh, I don't know which gets more damage, the car or the kid.
So are you making a point that skateboards have been?
Do you have to wear helmets? Cause I don't see anyone wearing them.
Yeah, so are you making a point that uh, electric vehicles and skateboards should be considered the same?
Well, one makes noise, the other doesn't.
Thank you. All right, moving on to uh, the mayor's report. Uh, Andy Koano is not here today, so he sent this. Uh, highlights from the mayor's newsletter. Uh, he had a state of the city address. And uh, he and the members of the cabinet leadership team are hosting some town hall meetings. And I'll give you a, a schedule of those in just a second. City signs an agreement with the Department of Health to open a behavioral health crisis hub in Ivalae. Uh, Royal Hawaiian Band moves to its new home in the Waikiki Vista. Uh, important traffic update for the residents of Lani Kai. And these are things that are contained in the mayor's newsletter. Meet your city officials starting uh, tonight at the Blaisdell, uh, the twenty fifth at Manoa, May second. Uh, I, this is in the mayor's newsletter, I'm not gonna read all these off. I think the closest one that we're getting is uh, Ha'ula Elementary School on May thirtieth. And some follow-up issues. Somebody complained of a hoarder in a house at forty six, two, six, seven Kala'awa place. And residents have a safety concern because the property is vacant and derelict. Individuals have been seen entering, exiting the property. Re homeowner reportedly has passed away. Can the E and V crews check on the location? And on the tenth, a refuse inspector reported the street and curb area affronting that to be free and clear of any rubbish and or bulky items, which means that anything in the driveway or anything up around the house doesn't matter to them. Um, city inspector conducted a visit on four nine, unable to access the property because the front is boarded up. No person's observed entering or exiting the property. Uh, I would just like to state for the record that when you go visit something on a specific date or a specific time and observe something not happening, that doesn't mean it's not happening. And the residents still, I believe, have the concern about the uh, the refuse around the house. And if the homeowner has passed away, there probably should be some sort of red um, solution for the residents. That, that one still needs follow-up. And that's it for the mayor's report. Anything for the mayor's report to be in the record? You're not gonna get an answer, but. Okay, go ahead.
It's the Martin successor of Cynthia.
Okay, next.
Can they allow other neighborhoods chance to shut down what they do?
I didn't get. Oh, I get it. That, that was a, was, that was a Lani, that was a Lani Kai question, wasn't it? Gotcha. Okay, that's uh, that's for the, that question is, is, is in the minute, so thank you for that. I'm not gonna answer that. I, I don't have an answer to that question. Uh, but it is duly noted. Uh, Senator Kioho Kalole. Be nice.
Chair, board, members of.
Aloha.
I'm gonna just say five things and then happy to take questions at the, at the end. As you know, we're nearing the end of the legislative session. This has been a very challenging legislative session. Uh, the priority issues that I am involved in negotiating here at the end of the session include the, the bill to empower the counties to take further action on vacation rentals. That's sent to nine one nine and HB eighteen thirty eight. Happy to talk about that. Uh, we are also trying to negotiate a measure to set up an insurance stabilization fund, uh, similar to the Hawaii Hurricane relief fund that was set up after Hurricane Uniki, where, for those of you that remember, the private insurers who provided hurricane insurance after Uniki left the Hawaii market and there was no access to insurance, which is necessary if you have a mortgage and did not return for seven years. So a state fund was set up to provide insurance in that gap so that homeowners did not need to uh, go into the non-regulated insurance market like Lloyds of London and alike to provide, uh, to, to obtain uh, insurance or have banks force- based insurance on their mortgages. There's a extreme distress in uh, premium pricing in the condominium insurance market right now. Uh, we are uh, hoping that it does not spread to single-family residences, but it's a very volatile market. So we're trying to uh, figure out the right way to come to a, a solution on setting up a program for the state to fill the access gap. Uh, we had a three and a half hour briefing this afternoon with Hawaiian Electric Company regarding multiple pieces of legislation that they are asking for to help stabilize the situation with their operations, but also to have a briefing on their wildfire mitigation plans. Uh, we also had K I U present, so that was uh, an overall briefing. A wildfire safety planning and mitigation in the electrically utility space state. I'd be to discuss. Uh, we have uh, an agreement right now in the state budget for a pretty significant increase in funding to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, specifically on biosecurity. As you folks are all aware, that's been a real significant need on the windward side. Uh, if you have been following civil beat, you'll also know that they are undergoing uh, a reorganization in leadership at the Department of Agriculture to deal with the lack of, of uh, appropriate action in regulating martial operators and be responsible for the spread on the windward side specifically. Stay tuned on that one. And yesterday, Attorney General's office released the first phase of their line of wildfire report. It's four hundred pages long. It's essentially a factual uh, presentation based off of the work of the Fire Safety Research Institute, which is contracted by the state to conduct an analysis. They are the gold standard fire research nonprofit organization in the country. It's an extremely thorough report. We had a briefing on Tuesday with the Attorney General and her team and the staff from that research institute. So also happy to take uh, any questions on that. And I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Sakamoto?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Senator. A question about the Hiko bill, uh, B V S P twenty nine, twenty two. I think there was another version too. But the five percent cap, uh, for somebody like myself who was on fixed income and uh, disabled, I, I don't get that much amount of revenue to pay for this high electric five percent cap. And is there gonna be a discount for that? And we, I earlier brought up this uh, concern about the uh, windmills being built outside of the uh, offshore of our bay over here. And uh, the company involved brought a property to my neighbor. And uh, I think it was five point something million dollars for a nine acre lot next to the substation, uh, Hiko. Did you folks know about this uh, project and, and knowledge of what's going on? That's my question.
Okay, on the second question, I don't have any knowledge about that situation. I do remember, I believe it was Noe Kalini came last year or the year before to discuss a potential offshore wind project off of uh, Waimea Nalo that I, I believe when she presented was a minimum of a dozen to fifteen years off. And that this was the first attempt at a dialogue. I am happy to follow up with her to see status of that. I'm unaware of any issue in Kanihoi related to that. Uh, as it relates to the fee cap, what Hiko presented today was that uh, what they are, so the, the bill that Hiko is requesting would authorize the Public Utilities Commission to allow them to securitize a fee on the front of your electric bill. It is not a self-executing bill. They would still need to go to the P U C and ask for authorization. The five percent cap would allow them to theoretically borrow on the private market up to two point five billion dollars off of the fee that would be charged on the front of the rate pairs electric bill for up to thirty years. On. On a residential electric bill. But what we did not get into during that meeting was that actually seventy percent of Hawaiian Electric's rate comes from commercial and industrial utilization, which is passed on to the consumer with a price of milk or, you know, anything, services, goods, things like that. So the four dollars that you would theoretically pay on your bill, it's not actually calculate how much you're going to pay in the long run. There are some real, there were some significant questions. As you folks know, the entire proceeding was live streamed on YouTube and you can find it on the Hawaii State Senate page on YouTube. Uh, I have some serious concerns about that uh, measure. We are still trying to figure out what the right way forward is. The simplest way to put this is this, it, uh, in the alternative, if in the next eighteen to twenty-four months or four or five years down the road, Hiko would subsequently file for bankruptcy, uh, the premium on that process, the lawyers, the, all of the excess costs will be substantial. Uh, when PG and E filed for bankruptcy after the Paradise Fire in California, uh, an article came out recently that assessed the total cost of fees that were charged just for that uh, bankruptcy. PG and E is uh, orders of magnitude larger. Seven hundred million dollars in fees were charged to the repair just for the bankruptcy. Uh, the real challenge with providing securitization at this point is that a wildfire mitigation plan has not been submitted, uh, vetted or approved by the P U C. So essentially a financing order of this nature would be, or unaccounted for costs that Hiko hopes to apply towards some sort of grid hardening based off of a to-be-determined plan. So it's a real messy situation right now. Sorry, not, not the greatest news, but that's sort of what we're trying to.
Jeff had his hand up, then Dale.
Hi, my name is Jeff Alcimini. I'm a former employee of Hawaiian Electric and the Utility Commission. Senator Joe Kalole, were you invited to any of the conferences after AES coal shutdown? Uh, that's in docket twenty twenty one dash zero zero two four. That's available on YouTube to look up. No. Were you aware that uh, in docket twenty twenty dash zero one three six of the Public Utilities Commission, it was discussed that when it shut down, we weren't going to have enough electricity on the grid for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, which we are in now?
So can you just, can, can, you, you're gonna get to the, what's the point here, Jeff? Last, last, last question. This is, this is.
Our electricity, where you were about. They did spike costs. They did not triple the costs.
And that's it? That, that's it. You've, you've made your point. Do you want to add anything to that? In addition to what you've already covered? Okay, Dale?
Thank you very much for your initiation of Senate Bill twenty nine nineteen and your continued support in addressing it. Uh, as a local community member, where we have illegal vacation rentals around us, we know that there's not enough teeth with the city and county currently in order to enforce. But I think if Senate Bill does make it through, I think it's very important that for the tax base of the state of Hawaii and for our community, I really hope you do everything you can in your closed doors meetings to make sure that that goes through. I just wanna say that.
Thank you. We are trying.
And just second that. Kim? Tommy?
Thanks, Mo. Uh, Jared, could, do you happen to have a link for that four hundred page? I think it's like almost four hundred page report on the, on the Maui wildfire by the DA's office?
No, I don't.
Or does anyone?
Hawaii Attorney General wildfire report that should get it in the first ten. That was everybody. Or you could go through them, those websites. Yeah, I think Hawaii Attorney General wildfire report.
Okay.
Should get you there.
Thank you.
You can ask it to me right from there. That's a good question.
Uh, Hiko applied for uh, federal infrastructure, money from the federal infrastructure bill for hardening, grid hardening prior to the fire. Uh, I think they submitted four different applications and they did win a hundred and ninety-five million dollars, ninety-five of which was immediately distributed. Uh, or I think they can draw down on, uh, that's what they discussed today. Uh, in addition to that, they've uh, withheld the dividend that they normally paid to their shareholders. Uh, last year, they received uh, the twenty twenty-three was a profitable year for Hiko. Uh, believe it or not, they reported two hundred million dollars in earnings, of which they uh, uh, transferred thirteen million for services and operations to the parent company and they retained the rest for hardening. So part of the discussion that we had today was ninety-five plus a hundred and eighty-seven is a lot of cash on hand to do hardening. And there are questions about whether they even have the manpower and capacity to facilitate hardening of that much money in one year's time and whether we should just revisit this next year when a wildfire plan has gone through the process and been approved.
I'm sorry, where did the additional one eighty-seven come from?
Uh, earnings.
Earnings.
That they withheld.
Thank you.
Or reinvested in.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Senator Ava not here. Uh, Representative Kitagawa mentioned she wasn't coming today. Representative Mathyoshi?
Hi, Chair. Um, I'm here on behalf of Representative Mathyoshi. Can you hear me?
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay. I'm Fahina and I'm Rep. Mathyoshi's committee clerk uh, for the session. And so I'll do my best to update you all on some, um, some things and answer any questions or concerns you have. Um, but if I cannot answer it, I will follow up with Rep. Mathyoshi after and get back to you all. Uh, Rep. Mathyoshi wishes that he could be here, but he had to watch his kids tonight. And Representative Kitagawa also cannot make it because she's in a budget negotiation meeting. Um, the first thing I'll go over is legislative updates. Like Senator uh, Kio Kalole has said, um, we are coming to the end of the legislative session. And so we're coming to conference. And this is the time when the Senate and the House come together um, to agree, agree upon bills. And this is the time when the Senate and the House come together to agree upon bills to send over to the governor's office for final approval. That's the only thing coming up. But the only bills that I will update you on today are the ones that Board Member Sakamoto emailed us about for updates. And the first two are related to cesspools, which is HB 2743, HD2 SD1 and HB 1892, HD2 SD1. So both bills are moving to conference because the House and the Senate does not agree upon the changes that have been made. The next bill is HB 1597, which relates to open meetings. And HB 1599, which relates to sunshine laws. And HB 1879, which relates to digital voter information guide. All three of these bills have been moved to agreed upon. So the Senate and the House has agreed upon the changes that have been made. And so the final vote will be sent to the governor in the upcoming weeks. That is all I have for bill updates. And the last thing I have for, for updates is state roads. Thank you, Councilmember Kiaina, for updates on the city roads. But the only thing I have, and many of you have probably seen it, is daytime work has started happening, started to happen last week on Kam Highway on the stretch from Castle Junction towards Burger King, and they are making great progress. But that is all. Thank you, Chair.
Any questions for Rep. Matoshi? Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Regarding the legislature session, I noticed that the session ends in May, but is any word of next year's legislature, future legislation to have it extended a little bit longer so bills can be heard in a timely manner? Because it seems like the 48-hour rule is very difficult for people to submit testimony and get down to the legislature or even look for the bill and comprehend something. But is there any way of extending the legislature session to like mid-May?
That's a good question. Is this just extension of the legislation session? Or are you talking about extension of testimony and hearing notices?
Well, basically, the extend the legislature sessions so it gives more time for bills to be heard and processed to committees.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Sadly, our office does not control that, but we can look into it. Speaker's office is the one that does send the schedules, so I can look into it and I have your email also to get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Laura Burbidge here, and I just wanted to know about the bill that was put forward about subdividing property. I don't know the bill number, but.
Natalia, I have an update on that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, since Natalia spoke, Natalia can go.
Thank you. First, I just want to mention, Mr. Sakamoto, there were several bills this year to lengthen the legislative session and to require the legislature to abide by the same sunshine law you do. Those bills didn't pass, but we did pass HR 119 requesting the Legislative Reference Bureau to conduct a study of a continuous legislative session and extending legislative session and adding additional recess days. That was HR 119 and actually a concurrent reso as well, HCR 138. And let me just share my screen on my presentation of the day. So just to really quickly go over some of the big hot topic issues at the legislature, the short-term rental phase-out bill that Senator Keo Hokalili mentioned is still alive, HB 1838. This is that controversial high-density zoning bill. It's SB number 3202 that Laura asked about. This bill is still alive, but it has been partially gutted. So basically, they removed the part that required counties to allow two or more ADUs per lot. They also removed the part that reduces the minimum lot size to 2,000 square feet. So basically, they removed the two most controversial aspects. They kept a piece about private covenants cannot restrict density and cannot restrict rent, like long-term rentals of different lots. However, it's going into conference committee, which means that any part of any previous version could potentially get resurrected. So we may see a bill that just has one or both of these elements that got taken out in the last committee. You know, it may come out looking just like the private covenants bit. It may come out with everything all together, so I will keep a close eye on this bill. I've been voting against it every time I've seen it and I will continue to vote against it because I just, it'll absolutely change the characters of our neighborhoods. And not only that, our sewers and our traffic was just not designed, our roads and our sewers were not designed for this kind of density. I don't think urban sprawl is the answer to our housing issues. I think there's much better ways we can tackle that housing issue. I also wanted to mention a pretty controversial estate tax exemption bill. SB 3289 just died, but HB 2653 is still alive. It basically would cost the state an estimated $43 million in lost revenue every year to expand the exemptions for the estate tax generation skipping tax exemption. That bill, HB 2653, is going to conference. And back in the community, I have some good news to report. The Suzet Dairy Park and a lot of those overgrown medians that everybody was all up in arms about a few months ago, after many calls and follow-ups and work order numbers, the overgrown grass has been cut. And most of those potholes on Kanioe Bay Drive have all been fixed, except for this one and I think a couple of others that are, they're going to be fixed by the end of June. They're basically repaving that whole section from the H3 entrance to the, to Mukapu Road. So there, all those potholes there should be fixed very shortly. Please let me know if you find any more. We had an LFA test kit distribution. It went really well. We passed out over 100 kits and we're doing another one at Ikahe Park. We're meeting up at this Sunday, April 21st at 9:00 AM at Ikahe Park Shopping Center. There's a link in this QR code if you want to sign up or you can email me. And since you guys asked about e-bike safety, I was just looking into this actually for a couple constituents. We do have some county ordinances and we also have some state laws. The state laws, I have the HRS numbers here, but it basically states that no person under the age of 16 shall operate low-speed electric bicycles, those are e-bikes. There's a separate HRS that requires helmets to be worn for anybody under the age of 16. And the parents, this also has like some liability language, kind of condemning the parents of any child or guardians of any wards shall not authorize or knowingly permit any such child to violate this chapter. And that's all I've got for now.
Thank you very much for that report. Any questions for the representative? Donald?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Representative. I sent your email earlier about the H3 citations. I hope you got that and were able to review it for last month because you were asking about statistics, so.
I did, thank you, yeah. I was asking more specifically about that May 3rd event to see if there's any citations that occurred from that, but I think Lieutenant Yu did provide an update to the board on that.
Yeah, I appreciate what they do for us here in Waimea.
Thank you.
And Chair, I just want to elaborate for Representative Kitagawa, since she's not here, for the record, I have a constituent who is blind, vision impaired, lives in Kahului, and the roundabout is terrible for people to walk in that during construction. There's no access way that's safe for any pedestrian and with the construction. So there should be more preparedness and more awareness for pedestrians to walk there during the construction in a safe manner. So I hope that Department of Transportation Services will look into that. Thank you.
I'd like to, at this, oh, thank you, Rep. And I'd like to, oh gosh, I can't go to board business yet. Anybody from Windward Community College? Akipuu Learning Center? Next is the approval of the regular meeting minutes, the March 2024 meeting minutes. I'd like to thank Donald Sakamoto for providing a much more lucid set of minutes. So will we be voting on that set of minutes? Yep, good. So, that was quick. It's been moved to accept the regular meeting minutes provided by Mr. Sakamoto. Moved and seconded. Without objection. So moved. All right. Next is Board Committee reports and assignments, attended meeting reports. Anybody have any?
Chair, I tried getting a hold of the Kahului.
Yes.
The wholeness. Anyway, and no response. So I'm going to keep trying.
Who was that? Was that from Mizuno or for the other folks?
I've been calling Mizuno's. He's the one who's in charge of all that.
Yeah, talk to the other folks, the folks that are actually running the Kahului.
Can you give me a contact?
I will, I will.
Okay.
Elaine, are you still here? Kanioe Bay Regional Council?
Yep, I'm here. Yep, we had a meeting, I think it was last week. And so just for members of the public that are interested in participating, we have a standing meeting, second Tuesday, starting at 6:30. And some updates, I think that the board might be interested in, is we, as a Kanioe Neighborhood Board, previously supported and submitted a resolution asking the legislature to enact rules to ban commercial aquarium collection. And there was a hui of five petitioners, one from the Koalapokol community that submitted a rulemaking petition to Biel and R to adopt rules to do just that. And so that's moving through the board. And so we had a conversation about that at our last Kanioe Neighborhood Board meeting, but just wanted to send that quick update because that's an issue that we as a board were previously engaged on. And so there's, yeah, continued discussions, no clear pathway of how that's going to move forward, but if any folks are interested, that's going to be a standing agenda item at our Kanioe Bay Regional Council meetings, as well as updates on illegal commercial activity going on in the bay and what enforcement Biel and R and Do'Ker are doing for that. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have to report.
Awesome. Thank you. I actually listened in on that meeting. I thought it was pretty insightful, especially what Makai Watch is doing and the information that they're gathering about the illegal, illegal use. So thumbs up to everybody there. This is. Madril. Yeah, Vice Chair, off you go.
Hi, sorry I'm offline today, but just want to let you know, I attend the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. They have a regular update on transportation improvement plans. So they briefed a couple of amendments for this year and mainly for safety improvements on Leek Leek Highway H3. If anyone has any comments, they can look at the, it's available online, but the comments are due sometime this week. So if you have anything, please feel free to let me know or just directly send the comments in to Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. Thanks.
Thank you very much. One other item, it's not on our Board Committee assignments or board yet, but this is an opportunity from Senator Keo Kauloe's office. We're looking for somebody from the Neighborhood Board to serve on the Windward Art Advisory Committee. And this is in collaboration with the Hawaii State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. And we've got one seat from the board to sit on that. And this group will be making future art decisions for the Kaniohe area made by the Art Advisory Committee. I guess that would be for murals and sculptures and signage and things like that in the public space. So if there's anybody on the board who's interested in serving on that art committee or has a passion for art, oh. Okay, we'll be submitting Dr. Holly Sevier for that. Okay, well, good. Congratulations. You are now dubbed our member on the board. We could use a little bit more of that. Some announcements, emergency preparedness fair, I'm just reiterating this, will be at the Windward Mall Saturday, May 11th from 10 to 2. The Kanioe Cert monthly meeting will be on Tuesday, May 14th, 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. That's two hours. At Kanioe Community Senior Center, monthly meetings are held second Tuesday of each month. You guys bring food there? Yes, okay, so food will be there. Kanioe Lions 75th Charter Anniversary Dinner on May 25th. If you're interested, kaniohelionsclub@gmail.com for more information. Our next regular board meeting will be May 16th, Thursday, right here at the Ben Parker Elementary School or using the virtual login credentials that you'll see on the agenda. There's nothing else on the agenda, so at this time, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you all for attending.